So call this meeting to order. I guess we'll rise and have fun. I'd like us to signify that United States of America to review the budget for which they are in on the nation under our in US government. Okay. Mrs. Watson?
Andrew Benson.
Katrina Minkowicz.
Here.
Dante.
Here.
Joseph Whitmore.
Here.
Heather Levine.
Here.
So a couple ground rules. This is a working meeting. There was no phone input. Just wants the board members. There is, the budget has been posted already, correct? This month's budget has already been put out, I think, on the web.
Uh, no, I who spoke on it, it wasn't put on the web. Because it's intended, it doesn't go on the.
It does, it's been.
But at this time. I did not receive any phone calls. I thought if I received phone calls, I would make sure somebody got it for the phone call.
I actually never put on those phones, so.
Well, once again, it's like.
Yeah, maybe she was never put on those phones.
I think it's, you know, I mean, you put it on, it could change, or maybe it could change, your product could change. Um, anyways, it's moving forward, I think, once we decide that the, it gets presented with the preliminary, it is then have to be posted.
I don't, I'm not familiar with those.
Why, I might.
I just follow somebody else's instructions.
So as we move forward, um, Joey has some questions or some comments. Oh, go ahead, Joe. I mean, the rest of you, and I discussed something, but we're back to the rest of board. Go ahead.
Right, well, I passed out a sheet, which was essentially my email, right, and my focus walked away through, well, in order.
Of course, you were talking.
And CJ corrected, you know, on the front door, in order to do the window part, it's an additional fifteen, maybe forty-three.
We're hoping to do it.
The window on the side, the people access to while you.
I did not, we weren't planning to do that.
You're not planning on doing that?
No.
Okay. That was the last I heard, is there a plan to make it so that people could get it, get to your office?
Yeah, we just, I don't know, we decided not to do that. I don't know. I don't, I don't know if I didn't get.
So.
Communicate or whatever.
So we're going to get people on the front door, in your door, to your office.
We were talking about putting a buzzer.
A buzzer.
Buzzer or something.
A buzzer. With a window on.
We didn't want to have the window on the side. We really decided that was a bad idea because of all the people for court.
True.
Hall of Fame stuff, and they just totally liked the court.
Right, yeah.
And decided we really didn't like that idea.
That makes sense to me. So some way.
Put a buzzer in.
Yeah.
We were talking about just having some kind of a buzzer, so we could just run home.
For assistance.
Well, is that door right on for wheelchair to get in, but you can't turn around as well?
They have handles, we have a wheelchair.
Because the other thing is you could put one of those automatic door where everything's on a tilt, and that door will open as well.
And then, because you're talking about.
Yeah.
Hand signals.
It would be.
Handing out.
Be a cost.
Hands.
You would get them. Yes, sir. It could be done at a cost, obviously, probably four or five thousand dollars. But I don't know if that's necessary, because there's no closure.
We didn't have closure. But.
Does it shut after you walk in? Or does it stay open?
They, it would stay open unless somebody shuts it.
Yeah. So you, so you can get in and out.
Just a lot of the.
What's there?
Some site.
Because if we, if we need to, we can run out and help it out, which we don't ourselves.
But having them stuck at the door, if they're coming in by themselves, that's an issue.
But they could just have some little door lock on us.
Okay.
Please buzz for assistance.
Just some little buzzer door lock.
That's fine.
That would be that.
I didn't see what it was.
So either way, are we going to go forward because even if we don't get the grant? I think that's the first question. And the second question is, you know, I think we should put this in the budget, do something we're intending on doing.
Regardless.
Regardless of the way, yeah.
Would that be whole town? Have it whole town?
That'd be whole town. It should come on reserve, uh, because once again, the goal is, let's foredecide differently, is to eventually have a CBB zero-based budget where only the annual expenditures are the ones that you're going to, um, tax the, uh, the people on, unless you have a separate line for increasing reserve fund or something like that. Sometimes you get, you have to bump up your reserves if they get low. And that's what all of this, the reserve charge is, that when we have these one-term, one-time expenses, that's why we've built up, we've maximized all the coffers.
Uh huh.
So we've accomplished that goal, um, in a, in a very quick time, as opposed to where in front of us currently, as far as that goes.
Right.
I'm going to squeeze myself a bit, I want to go get my, my sheet that has all the reserves on.
I'll have it sent out right now.
Okay. Pause for reserves. Was that, it's like, it could come out of the building, or whatever, the special name?
Yeah.
Which we could put it into the budget in a way.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only thing is, is if, and if, is if the grants are going to be paying for it, then then it just rolls back and it doesn't come out of the reserve.
Well, some of them will. Because we're only getting thirty, or the forty-six.
Right.
Forty-four about ten, so.
So some would come out and some would just roll.
So if we don't want to.
That is sixteen twenty-four oh five R, which is. That makes sense. And then if the grant comes through.
That requires.
Because if, because if I put it into the R accounts.
Yes.
It doesn't affect the, um.
The rate.
Right. It doesn't affect how much we have.
That makes sense.
So, I mean.
That's easy.
And then if it doesn't come out of reserve, it doesn't, the grant does come in and.
Yeah.
Then we just leave it in reserve.
Yeah.
And the ones who just stay in reserve, but we don't need them longer.
That makes sense to me. So how much are you putting in there?
Um, I think over forty-three thousand. All nine. And but with the R.
Okay. So is this the same number here, or is this like, it just said, I got after, is this the maximum?
Yeah, it's, it is on. I guess, it's how it all will work.
Okay.
If we took something out of reserve, you could put an R in.
Okay.
So you see the app.
Okay.
So it's, I mean, here it's the new before that equipment. So four oh five R.
So sixteen twenty-five.
So that if we won't affect.
Four oh five R.
The whole amount is in there, in case we don't get the.
Right.
Grant, which we're calling, and then if we get the grant, we just take what we need out, and leave the rest in.
Right. I don't, you know, you don't reserve.
Yeah.
Over time.
Absolutely. Well, we might already have the max of what we wanted them to be, as far as I understood. And we can, you know, if the board might decide to increase the max for building repair, considering there might be other major repairs.
If we've got extra coffee, can you put this out to the audience, Bill?
This is a working session, Joe, okay? I mean, there is stuff.
This is our information.
It's our information. And when it's available, we'll post it so everybody can see at the same time, once we find like certain things.
I don't see why I probably can't.
I don't get to argue with you, Joe, let's move on, okay?
So what we discussed while you, while you left, is if I put, if I put the forty-three thousand into sixteen twenty point four oh five R into the budget, that won't affect what has to be raised, because it, it comes out of, out of the reserve.
Exactly.
That's what that does. So if we want to put that forty-three thousand in, I'm sure that it's not going to change any.
For the door.
Yes. But I'm not going to put anything into the grants, because we haven't received it yet.
Right.
And we don't show revenues that we don't know we're getting.
So when we get the grant, it goes into the grant line?
If we had been awarded it already by now, then no problem. But if, if it's not awarded, then we don't put it in as revenues.
So it would go in and next year, it would be in the twenty-twenty year budget.
As a plus.
And award a grant.
My understanding is we can put it in as anticipated, and if we don't get it, we just, you know, don't count that as revenue while coming in. Again, it shows the intention, we're intending on getting this grant, we're likely to get it, um, so we put it in the revenue side, um, down stop by the expense side of hoping to allow using for the road.
Because the revenue side is projected. I don't write on it.
Andrew, show me. I mean, you're hoping, you're hoping for this, and the reality is, you already have the money in reserve for that.
We're showing them that we intend for it to happen regardless.
Exactly. I mean, if you want to put a footnote down the bottom, this is what the, you know, if you want to do a whole page of footnotes of different scenarios, the bottom line is the budget is designed to show what the project is for. Um, now, and I don't think grants are a little bit different than other ones, because the other revenue stream you have, have a consistent history, where the grants don't. If you've ever done grants, you know that there is no sure thing for the grant.
So I do think a note, especially if referenced to reserves, is important for people reading the posted by there, right? And then they don't.
Can we?
They might say, that's a lot of money for the door project. Per se.
Well, if you want to put like a page of notes, as far as, these are what the tents are.
So who's going to be doing that? I've never read other page of notes. I look, I mean, I'm not, I'm not an English speaker, I'm not going to be writing all this up, I don't.
Yes, someone wants to do it. Um, once again, this is, this is projection where I think that the budget's a little bit different than that. Um, we've already made, uh, with our reserve fund, that, that's where the money would come from.
I think the public will just be happy to see it in there as a budget expense, as a reserve budget expense.
I mean, I, it's in the reserve already, boy. Yeah. I mean, that's, and that's what was intended for, that's how this, this is supposed to work. One-time expenses are supposed to be in a pocket of money over here, such that you don't have a drastic change for the tax.
So, I mean, these, these changes that we're making today is going to have to go into a resolution for the first time that I've ever been aware of, which I, it perfectly makes sense to me that it'll be all clear for everybody, every change that we're making. So that will be in those notes.
Okay. So the resolution is a note.
So that should show everything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so we, we get the grant, and then what did you space that reserve for?
Yeah, we would not take so much out, because the grant would cover that portion of the expense.
Right. Right. You've got money going to a grant line, which would be used to.
We don't get the grant.
In office of that reserve.
Okay.
So if the project happens, the project.
I understand.
That's the point.
Yeah.
So we're not taking, we're not taking that from off, the grant is back up reserve? Or, and we're not?
Yeah, no, we could just take the difference out of the reserve.
Right. So that takes your other front door?
Yep. Give me that one.
Myers Park.
Uh, if we get that grant, I'm not sure how we're going to do our labor match.
Labor as in, what number are talking labor?
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Of labor each year match. This is broken up over time, though, in two years.
But the labor's four forty-seven, broken every two years, it's two twenty-three years.
And then talking with Cricket and Pat, they're maxed out of all the work they're currently doing, so how, how, in your discussions, what, how do you discuss?
The number that comes to mind is, the number that comes to mind is, I think it was like ninety-six thousand over three years, for this three-two thousand here. And that's something that I thought they would have clarity here from, from CJ when she did this grant. Most of this is in-kind.
There's, there's in-kind labor and in-kind supplies, right?
Oh, but equipment.
Equipment.
So every time that truck runs, it goes towards that in-kind.
That's the hundred and forty-nine thousand for equipment, uh, because the way the grant was written, it was seventy-five percent, we're, we're doing a match of the five ninety-six, seventy-five percent of that labor, twenty-five percent of this equipment. I did the math there.
So we still need to make sure that our departments can actually have the time, manpower to allocate for that. I mean, I mean, are we hiring additional people for this project?
I would say how we can. And I, I don't know how, how we do it otherwise.
Because you won't be able to maintain services and do the, like, for instance, the highway department has the water stuff to do on top of their other stuff, so.
Plus the load work.
So if, yeah. So even if it's a temporary, if it's a one-time, if it's related to a grant with a timeframe.
The grant is on a timeframe?
I think it's a two-year grant.
It's a two-year timeframe.
I think it's two, I was thinking it's three, and I'm not sure.
So it's a, so based on performance? So if it, in two years, it's not done?
I don't, I don't.
I mean, we need our match, because if we don't match, then we have to be out of pocket for a.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly, all in individual private.
CJ, this is Ed. I'm going to put you on speakerphone, we need some little clarity on this grant from Myers Park. Are you comfortable talking on speakerphone?
During meeting? Full disclosure.
Yeah. We're all in meeting.
Okay. So we have some, we have some concerns here. I thought we went over this with Joe and you in the, in your office, but let's get some clarity here, as far as this Myers Park grant goes, okay?
Okay.
So, so town board members, one at a time, go ahead and ask the questions.
Okay, my understanding is we've got to match the five ninety-six in the grant. Seventy-five percent of that's going to go towards labor, and twenty-five percent of that's going to go towards equipment, and it's a two-year grant. Am I correct on all that?
I think it's twenty-twenty through twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-three years.
Sorry, three years.
Oh, that's helpful. Nice. Thank you. So a three-year spread.
Yes, that's correct.
So that four forty-seven match on labor would be over three years instead of over two years.
Yes, I believe that's correct, and then also there was like a ninety-nine dollar cash match also.
So.
Like ninety-six or something like that.
Okay.
Ninety-six is changing.
Cash match.
Is that one time at the beginning, one time over three years?
Three years.
Do we have to do it each in three years?
I have to say. I'm not sure exactly whether this is a reimbursement grant. I'm not sure exactly how this is paid out.
Okay.
So it could be paid out.
I'm going to knock my head.
So it could be paid out over three years, or over, or per year? You said? Or you're not sure?
As far, as far as I'm aware, yes, because I think it's reimbursement, but I'm not entirely sure, I'm going to knock my head.
All right.
I can get, I'll look and get back to you, though, for sure.
The other question I have is this seventy-five percent labor over three years, does this include any fees that are engineering or legal that would come out of a different line? We're trying to figure out.
Yes. Yes, Dom, that, I'll take this creative piece of the contract, and as well as design, it's covered by the cash match, from what I recall. And the budget was attached to the, um, one of the previous emails I sent, so it, it should be there in that email, correct? The budget itself.
Is this a grant?
The budget, I guess.
Okay. Is this a grant where we have to do everything, or if we only do part, we get a partial law award?
Uh, well, the assumption would be that we would do, we would probably receive the entire reward, um, unless, uh, parts or EDF scaled it back, scaled the project back itself, um, but yes, we would assume the entire scope of work, which was set after we submitted the CFA, um, but I can send that again, if you'd like to see it. And there is a, you have seen the request for a little for the consultant, uh, but you have received the full application in, I don't know, since we submitted in late July, so maybe just not talk.
That's a separate, okay.
Yeah, it's attached to that email for a note budget.
I guess the question we're having here is, upon talking to Pat and Cricket, they're concerned of having staff to allocate, enough staff to allocate for the project without additional hire. So we're trying to see if the budget needs to reflect that to accomplish it.
Okay. So this was the underlying assumption, essentially going into the project, that we're carrying over from the two previous budget iterations of this project, is that the highway department would be doing a bulk of the construction work itself.
Right. I agree, that's what our assumption was.
That's what legislative, but perhaps that is not correct.
Well, I think they have the capacity to do it in a sense of skills, but they're, they're looking at total project allocation now, which is causing the concern.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. And I, and I think that's the question is, the project would be broken down over three years, um, and a significant part of it would be denied, and it's the first six to nine months of the project will be putting out the request or proposal, and then getting all the, the drawings done to put the co, put it out, essentially.
So basically.
We could, we could put the project out to bid, um, if, if highway was not comfortable with making that kind of time allocation, we would just have to bid out the project, essentially, we could see what is, what the bid numbers came to.
And, and honestly, we can't budget for these expenses when we don't have a grant.
Right.
So, you know, it's just, it comes right around to that thing, that if, if this grant hasn't been awarded, we're, we can't put expenses in that are for a project that we haven't been awarded yet. So we'll have to figure.
Or just try to figure out at this point, what can we do if we get the grant, do we have money to actually problem through with it, so.
Absolutely.
If I need one now?
All right.
It's both related.
So we'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's both related.
Comes in.
And this is, yes, I essentially did not scrutinize the budget numbers very closely in terms of what the planning consultant, Mike Walk, had generally prepared as part of the project. So I assumed that the fear-slaying numbers in the book you came up with the, the original budget scheme was, you know, on the other side, but that highway was so committed to that kind of in-kind of labor, so I may have been saying, saying carry that over, um, and rather not talking to Cricket completely about this allocation, so.
So let me give you some background here. If you're looking at the labor part, it's four hundred and forty-seven thousand, right? Roughly? And that's over three years, let's say.
Yeah, that sounds right. Yeah, that sounds right.
Yeah, so let's say for simple math, it's four hundred and fifty. Okay, so it's four hundred and fifty thousand over three years, which is a hundred and fifty a year. That, did that make sense so far, CJ? This is a three-year project. The hundred and fifty thousand, if, if we're charging thirty dollars an hour, which is, on average, we're pretty close to what our guys get paid, that's five thousand hours. If they all work, all fourteen-oh, it's fifty, if my math is correct, it's roughly about nine weeks.
And you have to hire people for that.
Or you allocate people off of your, because we have, the other thing you have to keep in mind is that we have part-time people in the summer, and we have different departments that can do different things there, so you have different crews. Not, everybody's going to be working on the same thing here, so you can do part if you want, or you can do all highway, we'll see where it goes, or not, because you can allocate every man and woman to that thing in the highway department, but the problem is, you're not going to have enough work for them all at the same time, so that's the other part, is that if we do the same kind, it's going to be generated, just like, for instance, when they're working on the Salmon Creek right now. Not everybody is down there doing it, there's a few people. So a lot of this could be partly town, partly could come from our fund balances, which are healthy, or not. Either way, I think it's, it's doable. But to have, Tremaine's point, we can't put in the budget the fact that we may have so much to do, because we simply don't know if we get the grant in the first place. And the other thing is that, if this is such a great project, there's certain projects we can delay a year if we have to, and move this one up, because it's a priority. I mean, the other thing Cricket does is he prioritizes certain things that can wait a year, and certain ones that can't wait a year, and moves things forward. So there are a lot of different things we can do with this, and I'll be happy to.
Yeah, and I.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, to that point, um, the highway department can essentially wait to see whether the grant is essentially awarded or not, because the first six to nine months of next year will be on call. Um, putting the R P out to the consultant, interviewing consultants, selecting a consultant, and then having that through the drawing. You know, we'll know, we won't even really start until late fall. You know, we thought of permitting, which is good for a while, for our B four D C, but they won't really do any actual work until probably the end of summer, early fall of next year. So if that helps, balance out the, the way that the in-time service would be lent to this particular project, then, um, yeah, then we can kind of just wait to see whether the grant is awarded for the second week of December.
So let me give you some more information here for everybody, to the fact that, when we look at our fund balances, you know, if we have to pay out for some of this to do that, our fund balances are at six months right now. We've done the projections for the year, it looks like we're still going to maintain a six-month fund balance, as our, on top of what our, our expenses are. Those are roughly, every, every month is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So if we go from a six-month down to a four-month, worst-case scenario, you just found five hundred thousand dollars to cover if we had to. I'm not suggesting we do that, I'm not suggesting we don't do any of that, but if you're looking for, once again, the worst-case scenario, there is money in that fund balance to do some of this stuff, if we had to kick in cash to do that.
And we could, we would then have the option of rolling perhaps part-time person at Parks and Recs, say, into a full-time for an ex, during the duration of, if we needed that, during the duration of the grant.
Well, there are. I mean, for instance, you can, you can roll in part-time people, which are very expensive, uh, for the summer, and still get that free up people to go elsewhere. And these sheets are the six months that you have for your fund balance projections, just to give you an idea of what, what six months of fund balance is there. So, once again, when we went over these, these things, we always had it covered, worst-case scenario, it was just a matter of where the money was going to come from, and if it had to come from in-kind, that's the best way to do it, if some of these other projects could be postponed, uh, or delayed, or whatever. That's Cricket's call also. He's, he's the guy that could shed a lot of this light in this. But getting back to the budget, I don't think we can earmark stuff in there, or, or what we can do is at least be conscious of there's money in the fund balance for the worst-case scenario.
And we may even have to make some adjustments.
We have the option to do that, which is nice.
I mean, you know, if it's awarded in December twenty twenty-one, the budget will definitely show these, you know, increase in salaries. And if, if we start using them at the end of twenty twenty, it's not a long time to.
Right.
For that year to pass on that.
I'm wondering, it, it sounds like it's not going to be split over three years, it's going to mostly be split over the final two years.
We don't know that, and I'm not going to assume that. Where, where is the, where is the money? CJ, where does the money come out for the planning and the cementals and all that, is that all through the labor member?
Yeah, that's the cash match generally, the cash match is going to cover the design and engineering fees, architectural fees, A for the project, and then also grant administration, another type of like administrative leadership for the project over the course of that three years. But I imagine that the bulk of the next year will be more design and engineering architecture essentially, and maybe that'll give us some grading, maybe, you know, next year, so there may be an opportunity to have something in time in this next year.
But that's all?
At least that's how I see it.
But that's part of the three-year, the three-year grant?
Yeah, so we have the ninety-eight years, whatever, that gives us seven-dollar cash match, and then we have another, whatever, four, I wanna say four ninety-something or four eighty-something in in-kind labor, and that could be of any stripe, we didn't break it down by specific job type either, just that the in-kind labor would be seventy-five percent of the match, of that fifty percent.
And is there, is...
That's what I'm thinking.
What's the grant, say the grant is awarded, is that three-year, quick calendar start right there?
It typically starts from the execution of the project, which is generally in January, February of next year following the awards of twenty twenty.
Right.
Coming January, February twenty twenty.
And then that, and then is that based on a performance thing after that? So if we don't get it done in three years, is there a performance issue with that, or is it affecting the grant at all?
No, generally speaking, the awards lengths are usually twice as long as the project is anticipated, so the DEP will likely say, yeah, you have six years to complete this project, but they're not the, they also are regularly being grants, the project extension, just like for, this is very similar to the WQIP project here working on with stuff in terms of water, it's a similar type of program.
Okay.
So that is, you know, that is timely, or it's a very similar deal. Like, it's just not getting county standing in basically for the state, it's just a different part of the agency that's giving, of the DEP that's granting these projects.
You're talking about Salmon Creek right now?
Yeah, exactly, it's a similar kind of in-kind match process.
Where we're fronting the money, and then the allocation catches up from the state.
Exactly, I think this is a reimbursement grant, let me check, I don't recall off the top, I have this. It's safe for me to do so right at this moment.
Understand, you're gonna try to...
I think funding, work allocation wise though, because it's not gonna actually kick in for the Highway and Parks till a little bit later, before, as we talked about. Then they can see it a year out, and, like you said, adjust the workload, not take on new big projects, knowing that this has to be completed.
I think part of what my mind is, you know, if we have this nine-hundred-thousand-dollar fund balance that we keep saying is there to cover all these things, is there some way we can start saying, all right, we're kind of setting this apart?
Put the board reserve for it.
To set this aside for that, so that we don't spend it twice.
We can do that next year.
Well, you won't do it, because you're the board, I mean, well, what you can do is say, for instance, you have a six-month fund balance policy. This follows when that's six months, if that's what the number is, it looks like it's gonna be pretty close to it. If that's the case, you can say to yourself, okay, we need to allocate so much, if you wanna make a different line out of it, I don't know why you would, but you say, okay, we have to keep this much off to one side, just in case. That's one of the reasons when we did these grants, we went through these numbers and crunched the worst-case scenario to say, are we going to overextend ourselves?
Mm-hmm.
And the answer was no. Are we doing, this is irresponsible, the answer is no. Is this an opportunity to really make this part really great, and use the assets we have, which are a great Highway Department, and still be able to adjust the money as we go, because we have a big pot of money? Yes, so as we go through, we just have to be conscious of, okay, this nine-hundred-and-eighty-four that's in there, or whatever that's in there, we may have to say, let's go down to, let's go down to five months instead of six, and that one month of two hundred and fifty thousand between your A and your D A, that's something that we're gonna earmark for next year, not touch it. I mean, we're still trying to keep six months at a time, this is one of those, if you put it in reserve, I mean, it's fine, you can make a reserve out of it, but why don't we see if we get the grant first? If we get the grant first, then we can earmark this money to be comfortable with.
I know, what I'm saying is, we keep saying, we can always take this out of reserve, and if we do that too many times, there's no reserve left, is that what I'm kind of...
I'm not saying it's a reserve, it's sort of your fund balance policy, it's a difference.
So if we keep saying, well, we can cover this with fund balance, you can cover this with fund balance, at some point, we may discover that we've, you know, decided to spend more fund balance than we're there.
Uh, no.
That's where it was.
Uh, no. I mean, let me say this one more time, no. One of the things we do when we track this every month is we track these fund balances and everything.
No, 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 I'm saying, when we sit here around the table and say, well, the Myers Park money will be four hundred and forty-seven, we got enough in the fund balance that we can cover...
It could come out of the fund balance until we get the grant monies to come in. It doesn't have to be reflected in the budget, is what I'm saying, is it would be a rolling thing.
Because it's a grant, it's not...
I'm not gonna use fund balance to just, you know, throw it away, I would only, it would be used because we know we're getting the grant money.
No, no, and what I'm saying is, when the board sits here and talks about, right, we've got a fund balance that we can cover this expense should we get the grant, and then we go on to the next item and say the same thing, are we spending more fund balance than what you have?
No, because, okay, two different topics. The door was out of reserves.
Yeah, I know that.
This is talking about is the fund balance that we have, our policy. The first one was out of a reserve we had, so now you're talking two different pots of money. Well, okay, but you say this, but then you say, are we gonna spend this down? The answer is no, because we're conscious of what the numbers are, and as the grant comes in, you're gonna have to adjust where you go, and you have your pot of money to do that.
And I think we have been conservative in selecting six months as our goal.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we go down to five months to address completion of something, which has a lot of unknowns in it, I don't think that's unreasonable.
CJ, are you still in transit?
Oh, yeah, I'm here.
I don't want to shut you off, but again, I don't wanna keep you here if it's unnecessary.
Can we talk quickly?
Can we keep her for the Parks and Rec Trail Master Plan?
This is all teachable moment, so you take as much time until she has to pull off I E more, and I don't know, we might lose you.
So can we jump to the grant one?
Can we jump to Parks and Rec, we have her on the line since I don't think she wants to get part of the camera conversation? So Parks Recreation Trail Master Plan, we have not budgeted any money for the Master Plan. We need to come up with a total of ninety-four. This, we can get the forty-four that we've already put in the Trailways Reserve. We have been putting fifteen in yearly, and so we need to get the extra fifty over a two-year period. If we count the fifteen from two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, that's forty-four plus thirty gets us to seventy-four. So we need another ten per budget year. Can we get that out of the, we had a consultant line with thirty, how much is in the consultant line?
Thirty sounds right. Consultant line.
What we were paying our planning consultant out of, because this is for consultancy. Can we take an additional ten per year out of that?
So this is coming out of B funds?
Keep in mind that the trail is an A fund.
Yeah.
And so we're doing a town line.
Right.
The consultant line is in the B fund.
Okay, the consultant line is in the B funds, but the consulting that occurs under that did affect some whole-town planning, correct? Because that was applied towards the sewer planning and that type of stuff, so that was kind of a whole-town.
Correct.
Planning, so some of the activity is whole-town.
Right, so personal opinion is that if it is whole-town, it should be an A fund discussion, not a B fund discussion.
Okay, so we would need to come up with ten thousand a year extra, more than we already have allocated in the reserve, plus the fifteen we would put in, we've been putting fifteen into that every year, so we would need another ten per year.
Do we have the fifteen going into the reserve in the budget already?
We usually do the reserve allocation after the budget.
Correct.
Yeah.
When we see what we have.
Correct. We make these adjustments at the end of the year, as far as that goes, from fund balance and other things. That's why last year, when we had an excellent year, we accelerated everything. And moved a lot of money because we had an excellent year, we accelerated to get where we are now. Now with the Parkland, whatever, we're at forty-four, and CJ, you still there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm on it.
Okay, so for the Master Plan, what was the total price of that, I'm sorry to test you.
Ninety-four.
Was it ninety-four, something like that?
Over two years.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, over two years, we have forty-four now, so you're basically looking at, my math is right, forty-seven a year, correct? That's the half of ninety-four, and so from there, you're gonna take twenty-two a year, I thought was the plan, out of the reserve, so that means you're gonna have to come up with twenty-five more a year.
But we, we're still, in our minds, allocating money into that, but it can go directly to payment.
You can allocate it in, it can have to come right back out if you want, or either way.
It can just go straight over.
Either way.
If you say six, and I say half, it does, I'll go with six.
That, based upon our previous year's allocations, has been fifteen a year, which would be another thirty, so we have forty-four plus thirty, which means we still need twenty thousand over two years. So how would you like to? You said you wanted that to be all-town.
It's gotta be A fund, yeah.
A fund.
And then we should show that we're taking money out of the reserve for the budget as well?
Well, yes, of course.
I mean, this is an important thing, because we cannot do all the grant money, the reason why we're doing this is because it's related to the Master Plan for Parks and Rec and Trails, and all the money you can get via grants occurs after this gets done.
Yes.
So this is, this is the big A part of, I mean, no, reserve was A, we're at the B phase of making things happen in a sensible planned way.
The bulkhead?
Yes.
Which is forty-five thousand. That's a one-time shot, right? Now, that comes out of your reserve, I think we have entered for that, I think. Might be under repairs, might be under...
Is Marina repaired?
Well, which kind of repair would be, do we have one for Marina? Would it come out in general?
We have forty-eight thousand, no, that's not right.
Let us talk here.
Forty-five thousand under Marina repairs.
What was the number?
Seventy-one, ten, four, ten, page three.
Okay, that's what's allocated to raise this year, right, that's an expense. And in the repair reserve fund, would Marina fall in a repair reserve fund?
So then you could free up something in that part of the line?
Free up forty-five thousand, you put it on a repair reserve fund, which is a repair.
Repair?
Does the Marina fall under that?
Do we have definitions of Marina for all of these, or is it just...
This is what we're trying to ask you, Tammy, is it pretty general?
I always thought the repair reserve was more for this town pop building and those kinds of repairs, but I could be wrong.
Well, I totally agree with you, that's what my expression was. But if that's the case, then, okay, are you gonna allocate some of this out of fund balance this year, and allocate some of this out of fund balance next year?
Or we could just increase the allocation to Parks and Trails by ten instead of doing fifty?
Which is just a transfer of money, it has nothing to do with the budget at all.
Yeah, so we could just get us to a grueling process.
Budget, budget, too.
Yeah, so we could do it that way.
Yeah.
The question came up, and I just...
No, this is all the money, well, I think well spent.
Yeah.
This part, this is what we're going to be...
This is planning, future, yes, holds it all together.
So, I guess...
So it doesn't affect the budget, is what you're saying?
So, I mean, instead of transferring fifteen thousand a year, we're going to twenty-five thousand a year?
That would cover that.
But this has nothing to do with the vote, and so, okay.
Well, we're just asking for a question.
It's something that would need to be decided later, when you do a resolution for transferring into...
Just make a note for future...
Right.
Probably I thought we were doing...
We found the money, because we're gonna just do it as part of increasing the reserve. Later, when we increase reserves, allocate to reserves, not during the budget time, it's not a budget thing, it happens in December?
Actually, it happens in February, if we finally get the final, yeah, and we get our final numbers, here's the pot of money left over.
So I'm just checking this off, as we've talked about where we're going with this, it does not affect the budget.
But we should show that we're taking money out of the reserves and have the expense in our budget, because we're gonna have that next year, right?
That is true. So how do we do that?
Take it out of the reserves and put it back in again in February?
What you're gonna do is, when we do these budgets here, it changes, there'll be documentation when they're in the resolution.
So, yes, when it happens.
That's where the document, I mean, if you're concerned about documentation, which is fine, it happens in the resolution. All these things should be spelled out in the resolution when we do these things.
So if, so the resolution will be about this hiring of the consultant planner, or putting out the RFP for this?
And the resolution's gonna cover any changes?
Yes.
Okay, it's gonna cover any changes that we're gonna make to the budget. So my question is, for this, is this coming out of A fund or B fund, and how much needs to be done for twenty twenty?
Well, there's two ways you look at it, in forty-seven, I would myself do twenty-five, it's like twenty-five we have to come up with every year, I do twenty-five a year. You have a reserve here, forty-four.
For the budget? I mean, I'm talking about what's the expense going to be for twenty twenty?
What, the total expense, because that's what we put in the budget, an expected expense.
That's where CJ comes in, the expense of this project, this Master Plan, does it have to be paid all the months, does it have to be paid over two years? What do we need, do you think?
It looks like forty-seven if you split it into two years.
Yeah, it would be, so the so the request for proposal that you're seeing, that has that kind of scope of work laid out for the project itself has a little bit of a timeline in it, that we essentially will fill out after the town board essentially decides whether they want to even move forward for the project of this scope and magnitude essentially. So of the ninety-four thousand, the project will probably end up commencing in June and running through the following December. So in terms of how those payments would be made to consultants, it would be back, it would be eighteen months from the middle, essentially, of next year, the middle of twenty twenty.
So we might need forty, essentially, because it's only a partial year, the first part, and we have that in our reserve?
Right, exactly, so we don't necessarily need to do anything about this this year, if you like to, we can see kind of how the planning process goes, if we get any good consultants, maybe we'll put the request for proposal out on, you know, say, contract recorder, and we'll get like this, you know, responses, I doubt it, but I'm glad it's always allowed without complacency. So I think the project in terms of how the budget would be spent would be split pretty evenly between the two years, the time, the time we actually hire our consultant.
If we put the forty-four thousand in the budget, and take, and put in that we're taking it out of the reserves, then we don't have to deal with the commissive referendum, should we move forward?
Oh, because it's in the budget, and everybody knows about it.
Everybody already knows about it, which makes it easier to actually spend the reserve.
In the time that you want to spend it.
Yeah.
That'll be...
Yeah, so if you just put the usual fifteen in this year, then that will, and that will cover us for the twenty-twenty, based on what's already in the reserve budget, that will take it to whatever, fifty, fifty-nine thousand.
So it will...
Well, I think what the, if I'm reading in the tea leaves here, I think what the board wants is a little bit of clarity as to where the money's going. So, once again, if you put in the resolution that, you know, you'll allocate forty-four thousand this year for budget for your Master Plan, that should give us some clarity, and also give us some clarity, give us some time, because if we don't really know until you said June of next year, before we start to send these things out, is that correct?
Well, my anticipated timeline will follow, it's staggered with, and talk with Pat about this finding of the two request or proposals we'd be putting out, right? So assuming we get the grants for Myers Park, we'll, right after the holidays, go over that scope of work, make sure it matches what we've got from the state in terms of that entire project, whether it's funded or not, maybe they'll scale it back, maybe not, maybe we'll just go with the current scope that's proposed. We'll do that immediately after, I mean, then we have to do, you know, weeks of questions and answers, we'll do a walkthrough with people at the park. Most of this is articulated in that scope of work you've seen for the Myers Park waterfront redevelopment project, that's what that RFP is called. And so then after that, you know, after going through that process, then we'll do the bigger one for the Parks, Trails, yeah, Parks Recreation and Trails Master Plan, you know, a month or two thereafter, and I anticipate that starting in probably April, and maybe we would award that in, you know, June of that year, so that we would stagger these two kinds of significant processes, but they can also inform each other, right? You know, the responses we're gonna get from the Myers Park project can possibly inform what we'll be seeing and what we'll be asking for as part of the Parks Master Plan, we're potentially allowing the opportunity for those projects to inform each other, so, I don't know that...
No, you're fine, so...
But there's not, there's not, oh, okay, so there's not, there's no clear dates that have been selected for these, because we really didn't even know if any of this would be funded through the budget process, you know, hoping we win the grant, right? And I'm hoping these projects are, it's okay, that's a full out of that capital reserve, but, you know, obviously, this is a process, I don't know whether this is funded or not, so we kind of left those dates open, but it'll generally follow that timeline, it needs to be articulated in both of those requests for proposal.
So CJ, if I can cut to the chase here,
Yeah.
How much, in your opinion, how much you think we're gonna need next, you're fine, you're fine. How much are we gonna need next year, in your opinion, for the Master Plan? For the pathways, park... For the, um, um, pathways, park regeneration, trails, master plan? How much you think, in your opinion, are we going to have to have, uh, cash on hand, uh, to do that for next year?
That would be half the project total, I would estimate, and that would be conservative.
So we should probably do, um, put it in the budget that we're going to spend fifty and maybe less.
Can we just put in the forty-four?
Yeah.
Could we do the forty-four?
Yeah, I think the forty-four is easier.
And then we can, when we put some in the reserve, we could go for the twenty-five for the balance, so we have that flex, does that make sense?
Yeah, it, it does, because in many ways, if we're talking April, by that time, we should be able to have all our numbers in.
Great.
This was, this was, uh, time well spent, my friend.
Thank you, thank, thank you very much.
Oh, okay.
Is there anything else?
Yeah, that's all that I got.
Uh, you're, as usual, you're a hundred percent. Um, is there anything else we need to ask our planner before we move on?
The only thing I want to talk about LEDs, which really, which again, isn't something that should probably, looking at the LEDs, there's four, there's four lighting districts. One of them is the towns, the others are the individual districts, Warren Road, um, Loboville, and Lake Watch, or Lake Watch. So if we did the LEDs, they should be paying for them.
Yes, it should be in the districts.
So they would not come out of the budget?
Well, the townwide would, would.
Would should be very minimal, I think it was like three bulbs or something.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I really don't see where we would need to put that in the budget, so, okay. We can move on to that one, too? Crossing that off in C F. Second page. That would be, I guess, on the safety screen. All right.
Yeah, by the way, that doesn't cover all of those, just, I believe it covers sixty town, and it won't cover the decorative bulbs, um, which I think are roughly correlated on the lighting districts, although it happens with some of that data, uh, when I'm moving.
Okay.
But then that will cover sixty of the lights, uh, where exactly they are, uh, to get that information from, uh, nine seconds of that. We can probably pair it with the list we have from them and then put up a hundred extensions into a streetlight inventory for us, uh, of all the lights, so if there's, what do we say, total, eighty?
What'd you say, CJ?
Eighty-three, I think.
Wouldn't we have to get approval from those districts to be able to do that?
That's a good question, but I don't think it actually, I don't think this is actually involved any of those districts, but I will.
Oh, it does, it's, most of it is for them, most of it is for the individual districts. Very small part of it is the charge.
I'm, I'm, I'm concerned with the NICE tech ownership correlations with the lighting districts. But we can find out, like, the CD is mapped to all of it, and I think they might have a sheet file we can share with me, too, to say what, what streetlights, where are they in which districts?
Great.
Any other questions about that?
Yeah, we can turn, I'll make it out of the.
Okay.
One other thing we're doing is the analysis of electricity saves as opposed to price to turn these into LEDs. And savings is minimal, um, and I think our calculations, which we'll have in a moment.
Looking at one of the months for bills. Okay, I want to do that, okay. Um, Warren Road District was twenty dollars for the electricity charge. Out of a five hundred and twenty dollar bill. So the only thing that's going to go down on that is the twenty dollars, it was pretty minimal.
And.
That's the only part of it.
When you compare what the cost of to switch these over.
I'm just not sure if it's going to be.
What's your payback time?
Well, I looked at, she gave us, uh, numbers for the overall, the payback time if you let ISAC continue to own them was a little less than a year.
We're not talking about ownership, we're just talking about changing over the LED lights.
Right, and I was, that was, there's two proposals, one ISAC owns them and changes them into LEDs, and one of those, we own them and change them into LEDs.
We're all aware of that.
If you go, if, the numbers that CJ set out, if ISAC owns them and turns them into LEDs, the payback period was a little less than a year. That was the overall numbers that I was given, I don't know how it breaks down further, lighting district.
Um, I think we need to revisit these numbers, you might find it might be a little different.
I'm just looking at the numbers I've given.
Anything else we need to talk to CJ about?
That's good.
Going one, going twice?
Bye CJ.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
Thank you.
All right, bye-bye, my friend, bye-bye. CJ, awesome. Okay.
Cameras, is that what we're, have you factors?
Uh, Patrick sent out an email containing to the cameras also.
Yeah, I, I.
You did?
Yeah, he does some research before, Ted Lux was bomb told to do this, and, um, um, anyway, so Patrick has those numbers, he sent them out in emails to people what the options were.
I have those in there.
Okay. And once again, this is something that I think, I think we need to mouse, once again, if you want to do this, this is something that I would also have extreme input from Patrick, but that would do that commodity technology reserve. If we had twenty thousand in.
I'd be okay with that, um, these are Patrick's numbers, and I do a little email with the modest, four thousand, maybe bump it up to five, just to give some wiggle room.
And that's if Ted doesn't want to do this anymore, right, Ted? Do you want to do this anymore?
I'd prefer not to.
The tingle's gone?
Just a public service, like I performed, but if you had it done yourself, I would be fine with it.
But it, it also allows Ted to take any major, you know, like, so planning board meetings, we want to take those, we could.
I like, I mean, I love that you've been a public servant for so long, but you've got other things maybe in rather do, grandbabies and such like. So I support that.
Once again, that would just be a resolution.
So, so we're putting in the technology, if we're members there, a five thousand?
I think five thousand, yeah, Patrick said four thousand for a modest, I think it gives a little bit of wiggle room on that, because these are ballpark numbers.
Right.
Give the rest of the board control with that number, and I'll come in.
Yes.
Here.
Okay. Tom, board contractual, do you want to move it to five thousand or leave it just like it is? Or have it at three thousand?
I think we're going to have at least one more board member, possibly more, coming in, and we ought to, well, have one each other side or two, up with the, one more in training.
Over the past few years, so two thousand fourteen, we spent eighteen hundred, fifteen, we spent six hundred, sixteen, we spent three hundred and fifty, two thousand seventeen, we six hundred and ninety-two. Two thousand eighteen was the first year when we were over three thousand, thirty-six hundred dollars. I really don't think three thousand is going to, if we possibly might need more than that, I'll be surprised. So I suggest that you just leave that at three thousand and one. But, not for it.
So. With which changes, because of eighteen, I've been going through the town, or the Association of Towns, which comes out of that also.
Right.
So we're going to have to have the two trips, one for training for whoever replaces you.
And we could, we could, we potentially could have two new people that would need training.
We could potentially.
Three new people. Okay, so.
We definitely have.
Somewhere in the, somewhere between there. So it's going to be, there, doesn't hurt to put it in and not use it.
Was it now three? Why don't you bump it to a thousand or four?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Contingency is a very flexible account. It can be whatever you want it to be. The more you put in it, the more fund balance you're going to need to raise, or you're going to need to raise the rate, so however you want to work it.
Well, why did it drop to zero?
Because that's what we designed to put leave it at this year.
Is there a reason for dropping it to zero?
No, no good reason at all, just pick that one. It's a, it's an account that's used for budget modifications. And you're taking money out of fund balance most of the time anyway. It, it's just not.
There's not much of a history here, is there?
No, because it goes down to zero as you use it. So it doesn't, you know, all it is is an, is an account that's used. Yes.
Wait for it.
That's right.
So what, you want the big pot of money, you want to put in the little pots of money?
I mean, if you want to be able to money, there are more money in there, it's completely up to you, I would just, it's going to have to raise the rate, or, or fund balance is going to have to be increased to keep the rate the same, whichever you want to do. So that's.
I don't have much to say about this.
I mean, it's just, you know, however you want, however you want to go with it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand it, and, and we, we talked about it a bit last year, and I'm not fully getting why it's there versus fund balance and what's the difference and.
It's an account used when you, I mean, and it could roll, if you, if you never have to do a budget modification and you never use it, it'll just roll back into the fund balance.
I think it.
But it just, it's just, it's an account that's used to, to modify the budget, I think.
I think it was there and used way more when we didn't have all these rate reserves. From which to.
That's exactly right, because there were no fund balance policy, there wasn't any reserve back, we had a big pot of money.
Right, so.
So you had a big pot of money, you started to put them in little pots because you had.
Didn't have specific reserves.
Exactly right, that's exactly, I think.
From which we've been utilizing.
Okay, so we put thirty thousand in it this year, what did we use it for, or how?
We've used eleven thousand, or was that nineteen?
Hey, give me an idea, if you can.
You have, I'd have to go back and look at the budget modifications, I don't remember.
So we have to.
But it's only used to move money into another account to use, or the money's to be taken out of fund balance for the budget modification. It's kind of six, twelve, a dozen of the other, it's the same kind of thing.
Do you have an opinion? I'm just trying to understand, um.
I think it might be the primordial tail.
Okay.
All right, once again, worst-case scenario, worst-case scenario, something happens and you're going to have to pay five thousand dollars. You, you're going to come out the big pot. And what you do, though, is you protect the, the tax rates, you don't raise the taxes unless it's for a specific reason. In this case, you really got the pot of money over here for that, you have a history of what it's being used for. And I, once again, I think Katrina hit the nail on the head, is that before we have the fund balance.
It was in a central line, it was utilized a lot more.
Yeah, one time it was almost over sixty, or something like that.
Back in the day, when I was on board, with this use.
Okay, so let's move on then.
Okay, superintendent, highways, secretary.
I spoke to Frigga about this today, and he said, there's nothing that he's out of since June, because the guys have been out working out in the field. He has a couple, you know, he puts a couple of the employees, when there's time, that they work in the office, he puts it into that category. Well, since June, everybody's been out, so that's what it's used for, when he needs help.
And he's anticipating not using it that much next year, okay, that makes sense, thank you.
There you go, Mr. Sherman.
Yeah, I talked to the Association of Towns about this, and nobody really knows for sure whether we're getting this or not, um.
We are.
We are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I spoke to, his name's Tim or I know, just one of these notes here, um, it is, it, it, when you say convoluted, yes, you're, you're, you're a hundred percent accurate on that comment, um, what? So normally, we get the monies in September, but this year, the state is waiting to give it to us in December, because they are getting it from the county, out of our sales tax monies. So they'll get it from the county and then give it to us in December, so it will be coming to us, but it just will be coming a little bit later in the year. And I said, so, you know, what do you think about future? Do you think I should put it in the twenty-twenty budget or not? And he said, you know, I, I can't predict the future, but I definitely was, you should be getting it next year without any question. So I left it in the budget for this year.
So if we're taking it out of the county's sales tax, how is that not going to reduce the sales tax money that we give to the county?
No idea, I don't really understand it, it's an unknown.
Let's do a little segue here, um, you saw the sales tax revenue? What are we over, over last year, seventy-seven thousand something like that? I don't see that all of a sudden, here's the sales tax money, all of a sudden, you're going to be taking less than that, because that's the formula they have to use. Unless they give us a heads up on that, I mean, a lot of budgets are based on that, you know.
We won't be able to screen.
Oh, they're not being, everyone's looking at, they're shaking their head and saying, why are we taking a system?
Well, if it happens, it'll be one of the few times the county unified. The Jordan Mullins, I don't think that happened very often.
Yeah, everybody likes it, except for Eric Paul.
Um, moving on to machinery.
Okay, so first of all, it's DA fifty-one thirty point two hundred. And what had happened is, is that this hundred and one, there was seventy-one thousand sixty-seven dollars that was an encumbrance for two thousand eighteen. That shows up in this year's monies because it has to be carried over for, to take out of this year. So that's why those numbers fluctuate, is because it was that seventy-one thousand.
Is the state money that's coming, that's encumbered, or how's it divided, encumbered?
It was in our budget from last year, but we, we didn't receive the truck or receive the bill of the truck right until two thousand nineteen. So I had to encumber some money to bring it over into two thousand nineteen, so that's where that comes from.
Which you can do when you have a specific purchase. In a budget that has not been paid for yet, you can do the encumber. Not, I, I hope to do this, whatever, you don't roll it over, this is why we got rid of all those TA accounts, and we're going to flush those out, because you just can't hold money for the sake of holding money in an account.
But we had a resol- resolution authorizing this expenditure.
Yeah, like December or something, yeah.
Once again, as you close the books, you, you say, okay, geez, we got this pot of money, ah, nine grand, that's something spoken for.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, so that takes care of that concern, right?
And, and it's like, you know, it's a DA, so the next question about the ninety thousand for the DA equipment, it, you know, one account or the other, it's really not. Make a break, you know, it's.
Okay, no, it's, it's helpful, this is helping me understand what's going on here, because I'm looking, trying to understand what's changing and why. Uh, so we're, the little, uh, equipment got zeroed out.
Then it's the ninety thousand is.
It's, it's in one of the other.
Yeah, it's.
It's in your left pocket, that's your right pocket, that's right.
Okay, um, the higher, higher just for CDs that we're supposed to be getting, I forget where that.
Uh, doing the research, I had to get a lot more money into it, and to be quite frank with you, we spent somewhere this year, I thought wisely, two hundred and seven thousand for the land. And all that, so I was very wary to put in because the rates weren't that high.
Okay.
Uh, amongst other things, the rates are starting to creep up, so like point four percent is starting to creep up a little bit anyways, we're doing nothing. Uh, and otherwise, we have to put in large some money of the capital, and I wasn't really comfortable doing that, considering we got a lot of moving parts here. Once again, if you really want to make more money into the, the trailsway, the parks, I think that's more invested there, or other things that we're going to be doing, uh, for the benefit of the town. So whereas on the one point two five percent, whoever we're going to get, I think, once again, that purchase of that land for many reasons, I thought was very beneficial to the town.
Okay, yeah, I, I remember you, we're about to look like you were saying, I remember hearing all that finished up.
Well, and it was like, okay, now's time, this is where reality comes into the room, and it's like, oh, we have to tie up how much? Okay, and there's so many moving parts around here, that we have so many things going on, that I think we have more benefit going over with, uh, going for the town.
In, in every interest revenue account, I increased, because, you know, we are getting substantially more this year anyway. So most of them I doubled, because it was, you know, we're already there, so, um, so I did increase the accounts anyway, even though it wasn't huge.
Yeah, I did didn't realize that, that it decided not to, uh, go forward with the CDs, and I understand why.
And I also, I believe, reached out to all of the, the different authorities and told them that we were not doing it this year.
I'm hoping that it's just on pause.
Yes. We already talked about the LED lights, I believe, um, now we're into whatever else.
This is the annual thing that we seem to do, the rent credit money to give reverse, and I'm wondering whether we can just put that in the budget.
He actually, I spoke to him earlier about that today, and we normally don't find out until we're in the year if what ones you're getting in there for monies. until we're in the year if we're going to be getting any extra monies.
Okay.
So, again, you know, it's like a grant that we don't know we're going to get. We really can't put monies that we don't know we're going to get for sure. And he, he actually, I'm not sure who he was speaking to, but, um, he's, I'm sure that that's ever going to happen again in the future. So, you know, it's one of those, you know, say, things where it's, you know, they might say, well, no, we're not, and.
That's an even stronger argument.
Yeah, so he was just like, you know, he, he said, it is not guaranteed, and it's might, pretty, pretty much not likely to be hit in 2020 anyway.
I really heard that from a truck.
Don't want to argue.
Yeah, why it was dead.
Last night.
So, okay, so that, that covers both of us.
Any questions from anybody else? So we did the calculations for the. Correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we did the calculations for the cap.
Oh, the tax cap, okay. We were over by $10,000, roughly.
Because of the drainage districts.
And there was, we had to add a drainage district this year.
Right.
So that, that was the majority of it, so.
I have a, I have a hard, I understand this, this is what the rules are. I have a hard time though, with saying that the water district got increased, all of a sudden we're called a tax cap. Because these are self-funded districts, like the.
Right.
And yet for some reason, that goes into calculation because it's a tax increase, and now we're over this white.
It shouldn't be.
I mean.
I think frustration here, and I, I don't have a good thing to say, well, it makes sense because.
I was hoping you did. Because this is not making sense to me either, my friend. It's like, okay, you want, you want us to do this, and this, and this. Okay, why don't you do it for the level, why don't you do it for other things that are consistent and not unpredicated by each individual district? That the districts have autonomy over and not the rest of it. And I'm not going to say the derogatory, I'm saying, okay, that's the, well, the good news is, is that we've always had full cooperation on the board to say, we're going to override this anyways, and that would give us flexibility. Because at the end of the day, it is what we can do to maximize the service to, to our residents here, by the way, my team. So yes, that is what it is. I think, what, if everything stays the same, what's it look, I mean, things could wiggle a little bit.
Well, actually, we've already had a decrease in the assessment. Village decreased by 1.7 million. And the town, it was one, one resident for $43,000. But with, with just changing, just making that change, it only, it didn't decrease the, or didn't increase the, the rate. It's still at 1.54 dot, dot, dot. You know, it like increased it, but didn't bring it up to 1.55, so it's still.
It's like ministryally lower or whatever. And some background here also, we're all concerned about the power plant, and power plant, and power plant. By the way, you just lost $15 million in three years over the shop.
Right, that's, that's huge.
That's, I don't think you're going to get that back. And we should know by the end of September, what NICE is going to do with, is going to allocate that, that power to the plant now.
Thinking of, I have to someone to ask.
What?
Today?
No. Same thing they did up at NICE.
All right, all right, all right. That was a rumor. And Jerry did not have any confirmation three days ago.
Okay.
I hope you're right. But I haven't heard anything, and I'm sure I'd suck one than the other, maybe the first one. These are rumors that are going around, so, and maybe you're right. I hope, I hope they get something, don't get me wrong. But I haven't heard anything yet, and usually if something like that happens, you call it right away. So having said that, once again, cumulatively, over here in three years, because you lose the first year, you lose the second year, that's $35,000 lost from Shalsmith. You lost $100,000 over here. And we keep building as fast as we can and working with our partners, whether it be these guys, or those guys, or these guys, or those girls, whoever. That's what we do. And some of it is new lumber. I visited the village solars today, and they're all happy, and they're cracking. I mean, you would love that product over there. They have 45 guys over in Compton, and they're able to pound around all that loss. You know, anyways. So, anything else we need to discuss?
We want to talk about CJ's, what do you call it?
No, this is a budget thing, and I think we need to conclude for tonight, and then move on. Um, I, we did work on this together, I think we got some nice stuff there. But when we start to look at this stuff in the future, we need some specifics. You know, that's where it comes into budget. What are these specifics we're shooting for down the road? With a five-year plan or whatever? And what are the things we're actually looking for? And one thing, I will plant the seed, and this just came up on our discussion with the highway department, I talked to Percy about this, because these trucks take 14 months to get to us, we may want to accelerate this and see what our money allocations are for sprinkler systems. That might be a priority.
Where would that money come from?
That's up to me to determine and ask the board for permission, where it's going to come from. It may come from fund balance, we'll see. It may come from repairs, it may come from something else, whatever we can do with this. And it may come from, from part B, part from DB, depending what the program is. I suspect it mostly comes from the A-line. We have now, we will cease our evaluation, need assessment. We want the contract that I was with. And now we'll talk to CJ about maybe going with somebody else for a different need assessment. There's not, there's not any negative discussions as far as what was, could not event, because that person may be used in the future in a different capacity. So I thank them for this service, we're looking forward to the bill so we can pay them if we can, our coverage 16. And then from there, we'll see what the real need assessment is. Because I think also, Cricket's had some time to get his feet on the ground and say, what do we really need here? And maybe work with somebody in a different capacity, as far as that goes, so what is the real need of there or not? There are things that we did have leases here, which we can use some of that money to put back in our pocket, in the repair reserve. We've got new windows up at that new place up there that we bought, the old Tom Hall, or Tom Barn. And also a new roof production. Those are the things, I think that we can put those in now. And I'll meet next year, maybe, maybe the way to here, if it's still functional. And then, once again, need assessment is okay. In two or three years, or five years, what would be your five-year plan? To put a second bathroom in and make it accessible like we do with the ball fields up there. Those are part of perhaps what you're making reference to, would your five-year plan? Those are the things we can allocate, and to have a methodical way to go forward. That part, I see, to implement that. I don't see that in money for our report, because we've already addressed that. But this type of thing where there's a need, that seems to be something that there's some clarity with, I think that can be addressed through the later, put in a plan, how we want to do this in the future, get an estimate, what that bathroom will be, whatever costs to use, or add on. I'll have a nap, nothing else. Good lead?
Thank you.
Good morning.
Appreciate it.
You're all good, thank you.